Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that we have a forum present. We have six members of the council here. Councilman Pity Simano is excused tonight. Our opening ceremony will be by Councilmember Lars Nordberg. Thank you, Mayor. Will everyone please rise with me and repeat the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America, and to the republic which is founded one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Oh, I see a scout shirt there. So we have some group. Generally, we invite any scouts that come to have someone come up and represent them. Three things: we don't want personal information, but your troop number, what you're working on, and just the general part of the city where you're from. Generally, we ask a young man to do that. Yes, on the microphone.
Hello, we are part of troop 646. We are here working on one of the requirements for the citizenship in the community. And, uh, what was the last one?
Just maybe the schools you attend. So we know what general part of the city.
Oh, um, we live in West Valley City. Right, no, um...
Your high school, junior high?
Oh, okay, um, high school, Granger.
Okay, you're all there. Thank you. And I think we probably have a school assignment here tonight. And so, um, our meeting should be brief enough that you can get a picture right after with whomever we can pull together, okay? All right. Then we have our minutes of July 16th. The motion on the minutes, please. Move to approve the minutes of July 16th?
Second.
Seeing no further comments? All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Passes unanimously, the minute is approved. We do have a proclamation on our agenda. We're declaring August as neighborhood nights out. Did we have someone who has been assigned to do that? Must have missed that.
Decided to do what, Mayor?
Read the proclamation. Okay. Yeah. This is a standard one that we do every year. We have multiple neighborhood nights out during, well, they actually have already started in July. They will go through most of the month of August. I didn't check and see the number last year. It seemed like it was in the 40s, in the low 40s, the number of different neighborhood groups that held a meeting to, as a night out against crime. And the city participates in those as best they can, but with that many, it's kind of hard. We might mention, though, Mayor, that this is the 36th annual national nights out that we've participated in. In fact, we've gotten national awards for our participation in. With that, then, I'm going to move on. Okay, we're at our comment period. We've had a few people sign up. Some, uh, have been here before, but in case others haven't, we allow five minutes per person. You can talk on any topic. We ask you to, or we remind you that you are being recorded. It is a permanent record. And we hope you keep it generally family-friendly, meaning yes, we do have kids and that who occasionally watch on the Internet. So please be mindful of your speech. The other item is, all comments and discussion are directed to the mayor. That's by design. We don't single out members of the council, since everything goes through the mayor anyway, basically. It's just kind of standard. It is not a debate. If you have questions, you can pose them, but there won't be answers. The five minutes is yours, or less if you want. And then we don't exceed a half hour. But we have two, four, five. So, anyway, let's see, anything else? Yeah. So we may respond afterwards, but we will not have a policy debate on anything that is not on our agenda. Let's see, we don't have a, no further instructions. With that, then, we have some people who have signed up. We're going to begin with Russell Sanderson, I believe. Is that right?
I didn't think I signed up. I asked. I didn't even know where the list was. I'm sorry.
The one that says if you'd like to speak?
Yeah, I came in today and took care of the issue and I asked, I told them, I said, "Please let them know I'd like to speak tonight for a couple of minutes." Okay?
Oh, okay.
First of all, I'd like to say thanks to all of you for your efforts and your work. Uh, you know, this is, you know, I don't care what people say. This takes a real effort on your part and you're not, you're really not ever compensated for the work you have to do, because it's a 24/7 job, Mayor. I know that. Anyway, I'd like to say that and thank you, and especially Public Works. I've had some interaction with them with water retention on a new home and some curb-cutting projects. And, you know, they have been so good to work with. I appreciate them. Anyway, also, your recorder's office have been really, really helpful. I signed up to run for city council, and I don't know why I did it, but I did it, okay? But they have been really good and really helpful. And the thing I've really enjoyed, having supervised the recorder's office in the first elections of this city was under my direction. And so I know what kind of problems go through there, but she's done a great job in notifying us of different things and changes and things that are coming up. She's done a great job. So I appreciate that and appreciate your staff. Come for one reason I came. I, you know, you put out signs. I put out a few signs. I'm not taking, I've been surprised at people trying to give you donations. I didn't, I didn't know that happened in life, okay? I turn down, because I don't take donations. Yeah, I'll listen to people, but I don't want any donations. And so I've been offered, but the thing that I've known, I've noticed is I've lost signs in an area of the city. They've disappeared. And there's cameras and that, you know, the Lorettes that owned the business, which is a motorcycle ATV business, on 35th, we put them out there. He said, "You better put them out there." I lived on Montague Drive by them, in fact, for about 15 years. We lived as neighbors and friends and associated with scouts and everything else. But anyway, I don't really want to know where they went or how they went, but it's interesting. That's the only, that's the only time I've ever had signs in that disappear in the city in all my career, both in South Jordan, St. George, here with Granger Hunter. I've never had them disappear, but all in this particular area, they're all of a sudden just gone, okay? So anyway, I just mentioned that, and I, because I thought I was too close to the city dog pound, and that's why the city was taken about, but I was assured that wasn't the case. Also, there's a book called The Let's Do It!, a book. It's a little red book. It's a history of the city written by Mike Gorel. Mike is still alive, but he said he worked for the Tribune for a number of years. He wrote a book. My history is in that book. The other history that was written by Mr. Winter was good. He done, he covered some parts of the old Granger area, but he really never covered the incorporation of the city, the change in form of government, all those kinds of things that I lived through. So I read the book. It's a little short, but I would like to encourage you to continue that history somehow in some kind of a book, picking up from maybe where Winter went off. Mayor, I'd like to see you continue that. The city is a great city. It's a big city. It's, you know, for the kids and they're going to school, it's something you ought to continue. So I'd like to encourage that. With regards to other issues, I notice in the city, you know, I see a red light run a day, if not two. Been actually almost hit by some of them, you know? I always pretty much travel with speed limits, you know? And I don't think, I don't think speed limits are even paid any attention to. I wish and hope that, especially the Bangor Highway area, the 35th South, those intersections there, 5600 West is an issue there, you know? And I see that, and somebody's going to get hurt or something. So I would encourage a little more attention to that if you could. I realize that it's a big city and, you know, there's not a tough time to do everything, but I'd appreciate that. Anyway, I also work for Granger Hunter. I'm a board member there. And it's been interesting that the way the city has been working with Granger Hunter, the development and the changes on 4100 South. That is great. 4100 South has been a cow trail for, ever since I joined the city in 81. It needed, something needed to happen there. So I appreciate from the Granger Hunter Board, the help and the consideration of joining Public Works and the two entities working together. This is good, because back in my day, as an original board member there in 95, that wasn't the case, you know? So I appreciate that. Appreciate all of you and your service. I thank you, and appreciate what you do, each and every one of you. You're all great. Thank you for your service.
Do it, time?
Good evening, Mayor. Once again, I'm here to request that the code enforcement notification be put on the study meeting. There are some things that I would request that you guys would talk about if you so put that on the study meeting, such as the hangtag program that used to be around, taping notices of violation, certified mail before any court hearing or abatement is done to ensure that the citizen gets, or at least all attempts are made to ensure that the citizen got the notification. Well, as I said last week and I've said many other times, going in and taking somebody's property, it's very, very emotional to them. And I would like to see that the city at least make as much effort as possible to ensure that notification was given other than putting something in the mail. Also, take a look at the fine structure. I talked about that last week. Owners, $25 a day, it is a fair amount. The rental, $500 a day, I believe it's a fair amount, but there's actually been a recent Supreme Court ruling, and you've got plenty of attorneys on staff that I can look that up, where it was brought up in cases where it was only $100 a day and where they talked about, and it was ruled in favor of the citizens, about that it was excessive. So it might be something to look into. And it's reduced down, you'll see 60, 70, 80,000 dollar fines reduced down to 4, 5, 6,000 dollar fines anyway. So if they're going to be reduced down, why not put them at $50 a day per fine? It's a penalty, and then keep that as the penalty instead of reducing it. Something to look at. Also, that before a hearing is done where there'll be fines assessed or abatement, the code enforcement employee drives past that property the day before and gets the most current, because if they come in compliance, why go in? They put the burden on the citizen to call in, but what, you know, what does it hurt for the code enforcement employee to go by and take the picture, come in and suspend the case even before it goes to the hearing? Why waste the hearing's time? Something to look at. I will email these, so you don't have to write them all down. And then the other thing is the ALJ judge. I've talked to 54 people in the last two weeks. Every single one of them having the director, doesn't matter who it is, the person or whatever, the director of code enforcement, be the ALJ, is a conflict of interest, whether people want to admit it or not. That's what the citizens believe. That's who I believe. I know in the past it wasn't. It's supposed to only be a temporary thing. I would ask you guys to get this taken care of as soon as possible, even if it's putting one of your city attorney people in there instead of that. And what it also does is it takes away a step for the citizen who isn't happy with the supervisor's decision of code enforcement. They cannot go now to the director, because the director sits in judgment. And so it takes away that other step that was built in. And so by fixing that, it would help. There was also brought up a few weeks ago about possibly changing the two at-large to districts. I don't know if that's something that will ever go. And I think having everybody accountable to the districts is a good idea, but it's, I just wanted to bring that up. And then the other thing, I know that there's requirements for the council to live in their districts, and once again, the at-large would make it more specific. If this requirement is with any other city employees, I would, I would ask to know where that is, you know, so, because the citizens and myself, I'm sure everyone else, wants people that are making the decision for West Valley to have some skin in the game, live in the city, and so that, you know, we don't have people making decisions for us, major decisions that, you know, live in Murray or live in, you know, somewhere else. I mean, Salt Lake. You know, we want to make sure that they're, if there is a requirement, you know, that they're in, and give them an incentive. There's some cities that give police departments incentive for police officers living in the city and stuff like that. Possibly look at doing something like that. My time is almost up. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary War.
I'm here about the same subject, code enforcement. On about June the 6th or 7th, I received a citation dated June 4th from a Mr. Patino. He claims, Mr. Patino claims that he sent us a warning letter on May the 9th about non-compliance of a rental unit that I own next door to my house. We, my wife and I claim that we never, ever received that first warning letter. And the reason we're fairly certain that we didn't is because I had a birthday that week, and my wife and daughter were busy planning a birthday party for me. When this letter arrived about my birthday time, my wife threw her hands in the air and says, "Oh, brother, one more thing we've got to contend with, and I'm busy doing this party." So it took a few days to get around to return the call to Mr. Patino. At any rate, a few days later, my wife called and talked to him on the telephone, explained that we had a lot of things going, and it was going to be quite a bit of work to get these driveways over at my duplex into compliance. So he extended our date out to be compliant to July the 20th, which we, by the 15th or 16th, we were compliant. I had gotten all the work taken care of. Most of the problem was weeds in the gravel driveway, and I got them out and put a little bit of new gravel in there, and it looks really good. Anyway, I seen Mr. Patino today, and he gave me some pictures that he had taken on June, on July the 17th. He came by and took a couple of pictures of it and realized that we were in compliance. He never contacted me and told me I was, didn't let me know, but he agreed that I was in compliance after that. And so imagine our surprise when on July 20th, we received a letter from Bonneville Collections stating that we owe a $200 fine. My complaint is that Mr. Patino gave us until July 20th to be compliant, which we are now. So we should not have to pay this $200 fine. It's, it's not a huge amount of money. You talk about $1,000 a day fines, et cetera, that's way out of my league. That $200 is a lot of money. I'm retired on a fixed income, and it's not easy. I went down to the city attorney's office today, and they told me that they can't do anything to help me. It is up to the people in the ordinance division to decide whether I should owe that fine or not. And they can rescind it if they choose to, and apparently they have not. They would not today while I was out there talking to Mr. Patino. So I'm petitioning here to see if somebody can do something to help me get past this fine. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I'm here for another neighbor. I've already got one neighbor that got fined $1,000 because he didn't make a phone call. That's what his expenses were, because Mr. Patino didn't have time to drive by and see that the vehicle been removed. That's old stuff. I have here before me this paper. I would like you to look at it, if you have one. The first lines is, "This came in as a complaint. That's not enough information." What's the date? What kind of a complaint? What are the neighbors complaining about? Why are they complaining? And then it jumps off, and he goes to what he wants to talk about. The owner, from what I understand, this was an old, old problem, back before West Valley was a city. Also, down about, uh, where did he mention Brock? He was shocked. Anyway, I went and talked to Brock today, and he said he didn't remember any, any talk with Mr. Patino. Oh, yeah, there it is. He's complaining about landscaping. This property has been concrete and blacktop since before West Valley was a city. I know that for a fact, because I have lived down the street since 1972. And they, Mr. Patino, in the last paragraph, on 7/15/19, he said he called Salt Lake City Planning and zoning. That's totally wrong. Salt Lake City had nothing to do with, anything to do with West Valley City. That's county. And there are a few spelling and errors on this paper, which, I can't help that, but I would recommend Mr. Patino maybe, or the city, invest in a spell check machine for him, because some of it's probably a logic. Let them read one. I also talked to Mr. Baker about this page. He said, "I have no knowledge of that case. I was never informed that any of this was going on." We need to do something about code enforcement. People are getting angry. Everybody I talked to is angry about code enforcement. Problem is, code enforcement, that means you have enforcers, and enforcers become punishers, I'm thinking, and they keep picking at every little thing and changing where they're going. I do not want Mr. Patino, I talked to him previously, and he's not going to like me, because I'm going to be here, and I'm going to be complaining, and I'm going to follow his work. That's all I have now, but I'll be back.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mayor? I'm the guy that he's been talking about. I've lived there since 1971. That driveway we're talking about has been in since 1972. I went to the county, I got permission. I had an approach put in before, covering that was on that street. I was watching my house be built, from the lot that I picked, the foundation being put in, right on up. Forty-eight years later, Mr. Patino wakes up, which I'm sure he hadn't been there that long. I don't think he's that old. But anyway, first of all, he was, I called him on the first notice I got. I do not have this stuff right. And then I told him, I was asking him about a few things, and he kept telling me, "See Troy." Every time I started another conversation, "See Troy." This happened five, six, maybe seven times. So I said, "Okay, what's his number?" Well, I never really got to talk with him. He wouldn't talk. So I went to Troy. There's a building that was aside of my place. There was a carport with a canvas cover on it. And eight years later, Ed, who used to work for the code enforcement, come by, or maybe up there to Plan and Zoning, I guess is where he really worked, and he come by and he said, "I won't do." Well, between the time that the canvas cover rotted, which is two years later, I put some tin on it, and I was sitting in the middle of my driveway. So he come by and he says, "I won't do." And I says, "Well, what do you want?" He says, "Well, move it over against the house, bolt it down, and I'll come and inspect it," which I did. I even went further, even submitted the four corners in, so it'd be solid, stable. And then he would come back, he said, "It's okay." He said, "I've got no permit for it." I didn't pull a permit for it. It was just covering a canvas, taking the place of a canvas. If I'd have known I had to, I would have, but I didn't know that. But 10 years later, this is when Ed come on the scene. 2000, this is when I got the canvas covered. 2008, I put the tin on it. 2010, about 2002, I put the cover on it, the tin on it, and 2010, he come to me and said that I won't do, bolt it down. Well, he come in and he did inspect it. My son was standing there when he did. And he said, "Okay," but nothing was ever happened after that. You people don't seem to have, you have something recorded there that I... Anyway, let's move on. It's all been fixed. I've had Troy come and look at it. He likes the structure of it. It's a sound structure. I put it, and then Patino told me that I had to put a garage door on it. It was a canvas covered. Well, 17 years of canvas cover hanging there, it was tattered. Sure, let's replace it. We have to. So I did. It's all painted, all trimmed, all looking nice, side of the building. He asked me to take down some tin on some gates. I took the gates right off, got rid of them, pushed my bolt back there. It's all cleaned up, all nice. So that, and he come and looked at it, checked it. I went, bought a permit. He inspected again, went ahead, signed it off. That's done. And also, they pulled up a visual overhead. They found out that that driveway was there before. This was a city. And they said, "Okay." It was approved by county. They were, "Okay, I've got the paperwork right here." And so then I get another notice in the, I talked, called Patino, and I wanted to talk to him, and I'm telling you, that man is not to be talked to. This city's going to lose a lot if they keep him on board. And I'm not, I like, I'm a guy, I like to settle a problem. I like to talk about a settled problem. So that's about where I stand. He said, "They're not landscaping, little, well, there's dry scape in front of my house." He wants me to take the water from the reservoirs we haven't gotten, put it on the ground. And at the end of this little paragraph, when you read about what you people want, it says that we, also at the very end, it says that we encourage zero scape. What the heck is this guy talking about? I am so confused. I don't have any idea what to do, so I reschedule, I scheduled a hearing so we could talk this over, and that's the 13th of next month. And I guess that's about where we're sitting right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak tonight? We still have about five minutes. Seeing no one else, then we'll close public comment period. We'll bring it back here. Mr. Pyle, any comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the council?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Just echo what the Rachel Sanderson just says earlier. Nicole is very, very nice and very, very kind and very helpful, because this time is not my first time to run for office. I can see the differences, just to let you know that. Another thing is about the size, is I'm so glad to hear a lot of people losing their size, because I did, I did lose my size before, a couple of years ago. I just wonder where people, they took those for or something, but very interesting. And I don't know who to talk to, it's, thank you so much for every one of you to come here tonight and share with us about your concern in our city. And as the city council member or mayor, we try to do our best to assist you and assist the community.
Okay, thank you. Now, going through the layers, just so you're aware, if it's a policy issue that the council would like to pursue, we will put that on to our agenda. If it's one that we have not recently addressed or already discussed. If it is an item, a complaint regarding a specific citation, we refer that to our staff. They're available here, regular working hours during the day, that you can review those with them. So the ones that were, well, Jim D'Sock had a lot of them. Most of those we have talked about, code enforcement notification, visit before court time kind of thing. I'm not sure there are any there that the council wants to add on to that, to our agenda for our next meeting. There's not anything there that sticks out at me, so. And he was going to send an email to us so that we could follow up that way. Mr. Sanderson wanted us to continuously write a book, and the red lights, the history I know that the chair of that committee has heard that, so he can take that from there rather than the council and decide what he wants to do with that. The red lights, we're all aware of that problem. I have brought it up with numerous people and we will continue to work on that, but we won't put it on our agenda because we don't control that, other than trying to spread our force around to people, or to around the different sections of the city, but it is so common that there is no way to really catch the people who are doing it because there are so many. It's rare that I go through an intersection that I don't, and I've made a habit now of looking in my rearview mirror, especially if the light changes like when I'm in the intersection, I always look back and say, "Wonder if anyone's trying to sneak through after it's gone red," and there are usually two or three. But we will continue to work on that, so there's not anything there that I'm going to put on the agenda for next week and the others were specific to work out with staff. Any other comments, council members? Okay, with that, we'll move on to our resolutions. Resolution nineteen dash ninety-two, this is to purchase twenty-five vehicles from Young This, these vehicles are for, mostly for our police department, where because they don't make the ones we've been buying, we're going now to the Ford Interceptor Hybrid SUV that we will be using, and of course, when we buy those, we also have to upgrade them with certain things such as obviously the light bars and so forth. And then there are a few for Public Works, Park, Community Economic Development parks. So there are these twenty-five vehicles, this is part of a routine, if you will, replacement. We replace so many every year, and the total of that comes out to about eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars. Just in case there was some small discrepancies, we set the amount at eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand to replace those vehicles. So if we approve this tonight, that would authorize them to spend those funds up to that amount for the vehicles identified in our information that was attached to our That's probably enough information. With that then, to the council.
Move to approve resolution nineteen dash ninety-two. Second.
Property force, any further comments? Early routine. With that then, we'll go to our city recorder as required by state law to do a roll call.
Councilman Lin?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norpho?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item, resolution nineteen dash ninety-three, to approve the purchase of four vehicles from Young Toyota. This is part of our, again, our ongoing replacement, Toyota Camry Hybrids, and these, as I recall, were for detectives. We're trying to shift over where it is reasonable to some of the hybrids, more energy-efficient vehicles, fuel-efficient vehicles. But some of them cannot be because those vehicles, when you're involved in police work, a number of them must have the sufficient horsepower, speed, et cetera, to be able to deal with the things that come up in police work. So this one is for a hundred and two thousand dollars, one hundred and two thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars for those four vehicles, so we put that at not to exceed a hundred and three thousand. That is the issue before us. To the council.
I would refer approval of resolution nineteen ninety-two.
Second.
Property force, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norpho?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Lin?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Resolution nineteen dash ninety-four. This is to prepare a license agreement for pedestrian walkway between UTA and West Valley City at twenty-five oh five South Winton Street. And what this is, why it's with UTA, it is a sidewalk that will cross tracks. And so this comes from our Class C road funds, and we will be doing that, it's scheduled for this year, curb gutter sidewalk, textured colored concrete across portions of properties owned by UTA. UTA is not selling us the property, but rather ending into an agreement that we can put a sidewalk there and use it. I think that's the best way to do that, that will, and let's see, that was, that shows fifteen-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Fifteen-hundred-and-ninety-two, sir.
So it's not a lot, but we have brought it here. That is the introduction, then to the council.
Move for approval, resolution dash nineteen, nineteen dash ninety-four.
Second. Property force, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Lin?
Yes.
Councilman Buehler?
Aye.
Councilman Hume?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norpho?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Oh, I would make one more comment since it came up. I have been in a number of campaigns, I think eleven now, and when it comes to losing signs, I could never find any real correlation with anything other than, I did notice one correlation, and that was the closer I put a sign up to a junior high, the faster it came down. Now, I have no scientific proof, other than I did see a number of those teenage individuals who were using them as frisbees. Fortunately, they weren't doing it on the road, they were doing it in the fields. Apart from that, I couldn't detect anything other than just someone. So this concludes our agenda for our regular city council meeting. We do have a brief meeting subsequent to this called the City Redevelopment Agency for the city, and the council serves as members of that committee, an important piece of business that you might want to stay tuned for, it'll be fairly brief. With that then, we need to end our regular city council meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourning our regular city council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Or oppose, say no, passes unanimously, and hang on, this won't be very long. Okay, good pitch.
Called the order the special meeting of the Redevelopment Agency of West Valley City. We had our opening ceremony, roll call notes that all members of the agency are here except Member Fittisamano, who is excused. First order of business is the approval of our minutes of June fourth.
I would refer approval of second minutes.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of approving the minutes of June fourth?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that is unanimous. We have one resolution tonight, resolution nineteen dash zero nine. Mr. Pyle, would you like to explain that?
Sure, thank you, sir. This resolution is for consideration of a license agreement with ICO, which is the Commercial Residential Development Armored Library. And as they continue on into the second phase of the Fairborn Residences, they need some room and some space to park work trucks, employee, that sort of thing. We happen to have a few lots that are available and so negotiated this pretty nominal amount to rent those spots for them so that they can have some parking available while they're doing that work. It's a total of eight thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars across a couple of years, which equates to something like two hundred, oh, I'm sorry, it's three hundred and forty-eight dollars a month for the use of those lots.
Thank you. To the agency. Move for approval of resolution nineteen dash zero nine. Second. It's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? Ms. Kay Mac, would you like to call a vote?
Ms. Lin?
Yes.
Mr. Buehler?
Aye.
Mr. Hume?
Aye.
Mr. Bigelow?
Aye.
Mr. Norpho?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Christensen?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. One further motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.